I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, all.
Morning.
Call meeting to order, everything, nothing else? Okay, approve the agenda is printed then.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the agenda is printed, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Minutes from the sixth.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve the minutes is printed, any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Claims. Anybody want to bring that number up?
Okay, general was eight hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-one cents.
Okay.
Drainage was one hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and six cents.
That's what I got, second.
Two, any other discussion? We had a couple of questions that we got answered, so.
Name is high because it's the end of the fiscal year.
There was one in here for the heritage, that land. We're assuming that was what we thought.
Yeah, picking up some public, hunting and recreational property.
So with those numbers, uh, and a motion in the second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. I'm guessing you'll, you want me to throw it in there? See, we have no faces in there, Trish.
We started today. Oh, all right.
All right, general public concerns, any? Okay, being none, we'll move forward. Was Randy gonna come, Dave, did you say?
I don't know, I thought he was, but if he's not, uh, what this is, is, uh, we didn't officially throw this back into the Board of Adjustments lap, uh, so.
Last week.
Last week. So now we have to throw it back into their lap for a thirty day review on it. So I'll make a motion to extend the deadline for this, throw it back for thirty days of, for the appeal, back into the Board of Adjustments to review it.
I'll second Dave's motion.
All right, we have a motion in the second to extend this thirty day appeal.
So is that thirty days from today then?
I would imagine, because that's, that's about today.
Okay.
Is that what it is, John?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be thirty days from today. The other thing you're doing by sending it back to the Board of Adjustment is you're, either the Board of Adjustment can make another ruling, or to stand by their original ruling, and then you have another appeal period to go to District Court.
So then the appeal is actually to the District Court.
Right, I think there's been.
See, my confusion was, I thought they were appealing to the Board of Adjustments.
Right, there's, so the procedure in the zoning ordinance is you go to the zoning administrator, and then the Board of Adjustment, and then District Court. But it's, it's general enough that I think if Mitch wanted to resubmit a changed application or something a little bit different, you could start over, and you can always ask the Board of Adjustment to reconsider. I think, my understanding of the plan is to try to work to some solution with changes in what Mitch wants to do, or what the neighbors want, but try to work through that and give us more time, and then try to submit that back to the Board of Adjustment to see if that would fly, and if it doesn't, then the next step would be District Court.
Okay.
So essentially, this thirty day extension, or appeals process, would do that as John stated, so it gives them time for that to play out.
And then I think you just put it back to the Board of Adjustments, and then, then if somebody doesn't like it, they're, they're giving it to the board.
Okay.
And with the, what we had on the agenda for the other day, we were gonna do an electronic vote, because Rick left to go to Minnesota. When we talked about this last week, we talked about it Wednesday, was it Wednesday the deadline? We talked on Wednesday was the deadline, so we were nervous that we were gonna miss the deadline, so we were going to do an electronic vote, which then we talked with the rest of John and with the board, uh, Randy, we found out that the thirty days was really just a, it wasn't.
I think unless Mitch really wants to go to District Court, and even then, we could weigh that into what we support, but, uh, I think this is a better solution, and it gives everybody more time to try to figure something out, maybe it's better, or maybe not.
Well, that way we at least have the ability to listen to.
It's worth an opportunity to try.
Yeah. So with that, uh, we have a motion in the second for the thirty day extension, any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, is there a Ben in the ground?
My help?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thanks.
I've got, uh, one item on the agenda today, and that's to approve the fuel contract for WNH for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, beginning July. Uh, that contract that's sitting in front of you is the price above the rack, the price we pay the average of the DOP's five day fuel price, uh, so we pay state net price plus this amount, which is WNH's annual fee basically for delivery.
Okay.
The number of gallons is, is an estimate, is what we typically go through.
It's a lot of gallons.
Mm-hmm. But like the number one diesel, if we had a mild winter, we wouldn't, we could probably switch that.
Right.
If we get to the next spring and didn't use all of our twelve thousand gallon allotment.
We're not, we're not locked in, I mean, this isn't like when you put propane through your house where.
You're gonna use it.
A number of gallons.
Right.
There any?
Essentially, this is their handling.
This is just their handling.
Yeah.
And it went up, uh, one penny. Each item went up.
One penny, all right. All right, I'll make the motion to approve the awarded fuel contract to WNH Co-op for fiscal year twenty-three.
I'll second.
Here, we have a motion in the second to, um, the award in WNH Co-op's twenty-three. Your budget year, uh, any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Do we run, can we run, uh, Ruby in, in, uh, multiple graders, or do we have to use clear?
Yeah, I believe we run reds.
Hmm. So that, they're considered like farm equipment then?
Sure they're not a licensed deal.
They're not, no, I see.
More like a tractor.
They're more like a tractor, whatever. That saves a little bit.
It does. We save, uh, uh, or I'm sorry, we started in Fort Penn last week. Those guys are going heavy with that. Uh, Brian Jackson was here this morning, starting class with our motor operator, so I've got ten guys in training right now, uh, in the fuel pantry room, and we finished that up, uh, last week. Got the trim shot in, bought some oligres in the tables, some barnards. We reused the chairs that we had from the back area. You can see from the planes, I purchased a TV for the room. A lot of the presenters now, they're just looking into a HD micro and running off the TV versus fuel projectors.
Mm-hmm.
So they're in there doing that today. My city crew is on two hundred and tenth street, tearing out that small bridge between Burge and Colorado. We got that half railroad car sitting out there. Plan is remove the bridge today, get everything to grade, and.
Will that be enough to get us a half inch rain? Well, have them dig it fast so we can get.
I don't need no rain.
We don't?
I got drenched Saturday.
Oh.
On the bike.
Oh, they already got a lot of rain down there, it's annoying. Even north, south.
We do, you just need to stay up and touch.
Well, humidity would be a killer, but.
Well, I can't, I'll look at their home, it'd be hot.
Yes, it is, plenty of fluids, make sure they're.
Hydrated.
Hydrated and check everybody, have them check their antifreeze, and I hope for, uh, their air conditioners are all working, because I talked to one air conditioner guy, and he said he's got so many calls, he doesn't even know when he's gonna get to some of them, so, and he said it hasn't even got bad yet.
Uh, it's going to. Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it, for the most part, we're, uh, we're hauling our second round of rock. Uh, currently, we've spent about three hundred and sixty thousand of our five hundred thousand dollar budget on rock, so I agree with the second miles for all of our blade operators. They've all added about four miles, which should add one hundred thousand in rock between now and the end of fiscal year.
Speaking of rock, and the fact that you informed us that it was definitely going up, and looks like about eighty cents a ton.
About ten percent.
So how much of an impact is that gonna have? I mean, what are we talking, in the dollars amount from, you know, an approximate year over here?
It would be, uh, about ten percent less rock.
What was you saying?
Ten percent, yeah.
Will, will we have to deal with ten percent less?
You're gonna cut back the rock versus add to the budget?
Budget. Budget's already set.
Budget's already set. I mean, I can amend the budget, but, I mean, what it, what it essentially means is we're probably not gonna get the second round of rock next year, and less than prices come back down to normal. Um, Stratford gravel has not raised their price, so we could haul more from Stratford versus Martin Marietta, but sure, at some point, Stratford's gonna see that Martin Marietta went up, and that the prices.
I mean, is there a way of stockpiling it? I mean, we do stockpile rock.
We do stockpile rock, but, I mean, for the prices that we're getting from the forties, we have to order and send them on a rock to get a price for it. We don't.
Well, I guess I hate to see, you know, I think we've done a grand improvement on, like you said, you're going back out, adding some miles, taking care of problem areas, so on and so forth, of the secondary roads, have a, even a ten percent reduction in the ability to do that next year. You know, if we don't need to, fine, but if, you know, if it's needed, you don't see a reduction in the road maintenance that you're doing, like a vastly improved job on. I think our roads are much better than they have been, generally speaking, and then you're talking this increase, so all of this aren't gonna put as much on, so.
Well, I mean, the, the alternative is we cancel equipment or construction.
Yeah, yeah. Something's gotta give.
Our budget didn't go up by the extra hundred thousand.
But then you all start with the rock, and then what's the next thing?
You got rock, fuel prices.
It's gold inflation, it needs to weigh into budgets.
The only thing that we can cut is, is construction and equipment, equipment we're already locked in on, so if prices keep going up on, on fuel and rock, we'll just have to throttle back on our construction projects.
It's the same for everything, the tires that are increased, the labor to repair, the equipment that breaks, the.
Nothing's gone down this year.
Oh, that's what every household is going through.
Yeah.
I mean, it is.
You know, you don't do it.
Don't make any more money.
You do less or something.
Yeah, gotta cut back.
But you get my point, we, because I mean that sincerely, and the road maintenance and the roads in general are improved over year over years back, and it, like you said, you, you think they're conscientious and getting extra where needed, and been able to, you know, have a little extra flexibility in some of the cases.
But, I mean, Red County's looking at postponing, uh, construction projects to keep up with the, the price of fuel increases and.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what's gotta happen.
But then, by the time we do that, then we skip a bridge that was scheduled for this year, move it back, everything else down the ten year plan gets pushed back.
Yeah, your, your five year plan turns into a six year plan.
It does.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully things do improve.
The delicate balance of maintenance and construction.
Yeah, you, you do what has to be done, but not the extras.
Correct.
So.
Well, thank you. Um, let's collect the bottle. Collect the bottle for Jana.
Here, do you want a copy of that, is that what you want? Oh, okay.
Jana?
Trying to help out, can't. With, um, my retirement pending, ended this year, and Janice Henniger, I think, was a primary. We have hired Lindsey Curry as a driver's license clerk, as our current clerk, or deputy, driver's license deputy, Ashley, is moving over to Janice Henniger's job as a tech deputy. Natalie's carrying, and then my more available deputy, and then Lindsey starts on the twentieth, twenty.
So she'll get some training and stuff before it actually shifts completely.
It's gonna be quite the shift, though.
Yeah, but at least we have several months to train.
Yeah, they go through all the steps of the seasons.
Yeah.
Does take a little bit of time with driver's license, we gotta work with the.
Okay, so the shift, so there's morning for training for that?
Eighteen, eighteen, eighteen for drives, like you can eat for other trainings, and they do come up here also. And it's, and Janice is pretty knowledgeable, so, um, even although there's been good to help with drives, because they do it every day, with their office being separate from the turnus office.
How long of a wait do we have for someone calls in and needs to get driver's license?
I don't know what's going on with driver's license with your law. Right now, it's a little week out, and normally it's a day or two, we get you in.
Yeah, I just had a relative realize her license was expired, she couldn't get in until July something, over in bigger cities.
Really?
Yeah, so.
The bigger cities make you, um, to make your appointments online, also, you don't even get to talk to a person. You apply the slot that's open on their, on like schedule and pick in. Our, um, most disappointing part of the appointments is that people don't call when they.
Don't show up.
Yeah. That's just, they walk in.
Yeah.
But that happens, so the timing issue also, have the right person to come in, but.
Mm-hmm. So is that higher than your currently full?
Yep.
So then, you're currently full? I don't even wanna say it. And you're currently full? Not what we're, we're back to. All right.
Well, I'll make that motion to accept the hire of Lindsey Curry as the driver's license clerk, wage twenty dollars.
We have a second too then, all right?
I'm sorry.
We have a motion in the second to accept Lindsey Curry as the driver's license clerk, uh, any other discussion? Is that like a ninety day, uh, I'm curious, is that a ninety day review?
No, that's six months.
Six months, right, six months, then? All right, any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Jana. All right. Is that date and time for the FY twenty-one, twenty-two county budget amendment?
Got it. Several areas that need amendments, um.
What a day this is coming after the twenty-seventh.
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 Put it on the twenty-seventh Monday.
But you pick at a time?
As I said, there's nothing else on, for drainage, so what do you wanna do it at eight forty, or? That'd be, in case you have somebody in at eight thirty?
Oh, I understand what you mean.
General public?
Eight forty.
Eight forty?
I'll second that, if somebody else didn't. Twenty-seventh at eight forty.
Eight forty, twenty-seventh. We have a motion in the second, eight forty on the twenty-seventh, any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Is, did anybody see Colin out here?
Haven't seen him yet.
No, I, yeah, yeah, there are some people waiting.
Haven't seen Colin.
I don't see anybody on Zoom.
Do our committee reports, get them out of the way.
We could do that.
Won't take long, I don't think.
Okay, on June seventh, um, I paid in the downtown, um, conference, um, and a lot of good information. There's a lot of money out there for, um, revitalizing the downtown as far as the old buildings, um, upper story, um, apartments. There is even, um, money out there for, um, old houses that need to be cleaned up, things like that. And I think we even talked about commercial, I think it was both, um, private and commercial. So there's a very interesting, um, Janet, um, Birdie was there, I was really glad to see that. So there was some other, um, people from the, from the Humboldt County, for the towns.
So when you say them houses, so the others, the smaller towns would have the ability to?
Yes, mhm, the smaller towns would be able to participate in that, and even their downtowns, I mean, they're, they're, they're main streets. Um, there will, there's a lot of, they have, um, some really good, um, pictures and, um, discussion on. I mean, these are like small towns that got their outsides of their buildings cleaned up, and then they're putting apartments in the upper stories. And when we did our downtown walk, I was really surprised, I didn't realize there was that many nice apartments.
There is.
In, in downtown. So I guess a lot, like some professional people use those until they, or even just people tell they're waiting for their houses to get, to get built or whatever, but, yeah, so I learned a lot by doing the downtown tour.
That's, that's the new thing in, like down Fort Utes, they're gonna do is put commercial on the main floor, apartments up above.
Mhm, yep.
So.
That's all I had.
I was visiting in heck last week, but the only official meeting I had was the animal shelter on Wednesday.
Yeah, kinda like Dave, I didn't have any official meetings, went and looked at the tile repair project that went very well, and, uh, but, uh, yeah, nothing, uh, as far as extracurricular meetings.
Yeah, I had no meetings last week.
I had one, but I, for the life of me, I can't remember where I went, so.
Too many meetings.
Yeah, but, um, I guess it wasn't. All if I remember, I'll bring it up next week. Uh, well, do we want it canvas first, and?
I don't think we have two.
No, that, unless, I don't know, that never goes real fast.
No.
See if they're out there.
Well, we can move into drainage, they can move into drainage and get skilling, and we can talk about other things for a while, I'm sure.
And nobody's calling here to talk about it?
See anything? Let me, uh.
I mean, in five minutes, I don't have his, I don't have his phone number.
If he don't show up for twenty minutes, we're gonna just, uh, do a gentleman act for a while.
Let's see.
Well, if it takes that long to get driver's license in a bigger town, there's another good reason to move to a smaller town.
Yeah, there you go.
You have a smaller community, don't have a hassle.
And I don't know how that works, if you get stopped with an expired driver's license since March, and you can't get into it.
March?
There he is.
Oh, I thought.
Oh, yeah, oh, I know what that is.
Thirty days after and thirty, isn't it thirty, or is it sixty now?
I think he got thirty after and thirty before.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So, somebody wanna make the motion to go into drainage?
I'll make that motion to go into drainage.
Second.
Motion in second to go into drainage, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
I'm gonna bring in our new person.
Pardon?
I would think so.
Do you want to bring in the new person?
Bring her in. Yeah, have her sit in and kinda get the, get the ropes.
Come on up, Colin. Morning.
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 Running rain?
Not really, just a little bit of rainfall, it's, uh.
My wife's down in Iowa City this morning, she said it was just kinda hazy down there, and, uh, no rain, and I said, well, it can't make a bit of mind here if it wants to rain or not.
Yeah.
I'm helping her, so I don't think I'm helping her really much. There.
Swear to God, that's fine.
Is that good enough? Give you the spotlight.
Do you wanna introduce your new employee? Introduce your new employee.
Yes, yeah, well. All right.
Just like, we get this whole package?
We get most of them, okay?
Three class and the engineer's recorder.
So we finally have a new drainage person. This is Mary Stuppi, and this is Colin, who he is an engineer from Jacobson, Westegard. Been working with him quite a bit for projects.
Here, we'll take one more.
Dave, Eric, Bruce.
Hi there.
I would just say, when we start this, and he starts talking, and all of a sudden you're like, what in the, did I get into? Just relax, we'll, it'll, after a while it starts. So many times you'll listen, you'll, and I remember that, so it's kind of overwhelming.
Don't be afraid to ask questions. Mike, oh my gosh, my first year.
All right, which page are you starting here?
Well, I was just gonna kinda quickly go through the preliminary engineering.
Okay.
So I just, I've been in here before to talk about this project.
Are these people in the hallway for this?
They can come in.
I think they're, I think they're doing for that, so they might wanna. Yeah, kinda follows you around, uh.
Because you're the best looking one here, take it as a high compliment. Yeah. Yeah, well, considering what we have to work with, we have to stop.
Want to get the names, and you just, you know.
Did you want a copy too?
Just for the records, what's your, you can put your name on the.
Patty Peterson.
Patty?
Yeah.
Is that way she? Okay. All right, oh, we're just getting started here, Colin's gonna lead away.
So we've got this preliminary engineering report, uh, that I put together, I'll just kinda go through the basics of that. Um, and what this is, is this is a, a proposed improvement project of the drainage district. And what this is, is this is a proposed improvement project of the drainage districts, one hundred and three tile. So before any of this started, I understand there were several meetings between landowners. And there had been a lot of repairs that had been done on this, this tile system over, in recent years. And it's looks to be in pretty poor shape, it just keeps falling apart. So that's kind of part of the petition that was filed is because this, the system just continues to deteriorate. Or maybe it's time to, to do something about it, um.
Is there more copies of that?
The engineer's report?
Yeah. Oh, good, thanks, that's all right.
Yeah.
She's, he did give them to her.
I gave them.
Oh, okay, you've got copies of everything?
Yeah.
Okay, well, awesome, thank you.
And just so we're all on the same page of where we're talking about, if you flip towards the back of that report, which is kind of folded up according to file pages. Um, you can kind of see a basic map on the first page of that. Where it's showing, it's showing the town of Bode. And then the paint line is the tile that we're proposing. So the, the original system, there's railroad tracks right there. Across the railroad tracks, what, three, one, two, three different times. Um, and one thing with railroad crossings, like if we were gonna, if we were gonna go and just replace this whole system the way it was and try to parallel it, we'd have to go through the railroad tracks a bunch of times. And, um, when you do that, you have to board under the tracks and do, do all this monitoring of the, of the track itself. Like once, once a day for seven days, we gotta check the elevations to make sure it's not collapsing. All this additional stuff that adds, adds up quick to the, to the project cost. Um, and being that there's a ditch outlet not too far away, we can just run everything on the north side of the tracks. Kind of divert it around the lagoons there and then to a new outlet to the ditch. And that's a joint DD two open ditch. So what will happen there is the stuff on the south side of the tracks, they're still, still use the old tile. Um, but all that water from the north side of the tracks won't come on down to them anymore, so it'll relieve them somewhat. And that, we'll talk a little bit about the pre-classification, but the lands to the south that won't even use the new tile, um, we still have it as benefiting because, um, that will really take, take pressure off of their, of that section of tile so that they can just use it in the end of the future, if they did repairs or upgrades, it wouldn't need to be near as big. Um, so it'd be less of a hazard that way. Um, we're looking at eighteen and fifteen inch tile right now. But, um, I think because there's so much of the town of Bode in there, it wouldn't hurt to, to look at one size larger tile, and I think.
What, what is the coefficient rate, right, for the fifteen, eighteen and fifteen?
So what I did was, is for the ag lands, I used a one inch drainage coefficient. For the stuff within Bode, I used a one point five.
Yeah, because it's a lot of hard surface.
Yes. Um, if we, if we upsized it from fifteen and eighteen to eighteen point four, it would end up being about three, almost a three inch drainage coefficient together. Um, which would be more than plenty for the town of Bode in the future. And we're not looking at doing, like, there's a tile that crosses the tracks one more time on the south side of the tracks and then goes into Bode.
Mhm.
Where it's twelve inch, we're not looking to do anything to that. Um, but if something was ever done in the future, um, that's, that's kind of the balancing act. Is do you, how big do you make this one if there's ever gonna be anything done in Bode?
Mhm.
Uh, but I will say it should help the drainage within Bode right away because that twelve inches, like, I think it's at least an inch and a half drainage coefficient right now. But then it gets restricted down the line with the existing tile. So if we put these larger, this larger tile system in, it will help, it will help within Bode too. Because it'll free up the outlet for that twelve inch soul sewer within Bode.
So what's the distance on the corner that, hold everybody look down, we're, we're gonna be far enough away from there, we won't have any seeking, right?
Yeah, what is the distance there? I, I'm not sure it was not like twenty feet away or something. And a lot of that exact design, it's still, like, it can still be modified.
Change a little.
If, if this project moves forward and we go to get bid, but we can still change the design, um, a little bit before we do that. And it looks like it's about, looks like it's about a hundred feet away from the property line, which is quite a ways away certainly yet for the actual building.
So are we, and I don't want to get ahead of, would this be in concrete or would this be bid both ways?
We could bid it both ways, um, I'm recommending concrete.
I would too, I mean, I'd like to see.
Especially there's, to get to that outlet, we actually have to cut through a hill and it'll be about thirteen feet deep. Especially in that area, um.
Lot of weight.
Yeah, I'd like to keep concrete. And we've, we've kind of had that discussion before about plastic versus concrete. And I will say that, um, concrete pipe prices lately have gone crazy. I don't know as much about plastics, but I know that's gone up too, um.
Well, it uses petroleum, so.
Then we, then we use a plastic, you gotta use a lot of rock.
Right, right, you gotta encase it in rock and there's, you, you can't be putting it in if there's any water in the, in the trench. There's a lot of additional, um, complications, I guess, to make sure that gets done right, but it's not gonna deform. And once it's, once it's deformed, you're kind of in trouble. And the stuff has to get dug up and re-relayed. And that's, that's part of it too, because if we bid plastic, we'll put in there, like, if you, if it gets deformed or there's any problems, like, you have to dig it up and fix it at, at no cost. So that's kind of an insurance that typically we bid a little bit higher to cover themselves for that possibility. Um, but we could bid plastic as an alternative if we wanted to. But I, I say really this should be reinforced concrete pipe. And if smaller, it's twenty-four inches or less, if we're talking eighteen and fifteen, that shouldn't be too bad as far as reinforced concrete. And this district, there's about four hundred and forty-four acres. And there is some parts of Bode that don't drain into this, but most of Bode does. Um, we looked at, we sent out letters to everybody within the district about wetlands. When you're, when you're looking at a project of this nature to improve drainage, like, we're upsizing stuff and improving drainage, um, we gotta worry a little bit about, um, farm program and farm wetlands. If you convert them, then you could get in trouble with, um, the farm program eligibility. And we got back from almost everybody, I believe, wetland determinations, and there was no wetlands, no farm wetlands within the district. So we're sitting good as far as that goes.
Mhm.
Um, just for reference, the, the existing tile was installed in nineteen twenty, so it's a hundred years old. And probably, it'd be my guess that because Bode dumped into it, and it could, I don't know, a long time ago, there could have been some septic tanks and things that were hooked onto that, that the gases could eat some of the concrete and made it weaker faster. Um, but really the tile is in very poor condition. If something needs to be done, this seems to be a practical solution where we don't have to incur a cost of crossing railroad tracks several times.
Mhm.
That, it probably to cross the tracks once would be at least, at least fifty to seventy thousand.
Plus the headache.
Yeah, yeah. And for, I've got a project cost estimate, that's in the middle of this engineer's report. If you flip to page four, well, it starts on page four and ends on page five. So I've got a total, total estimated cost of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, and there was, so this tile goes from, from the ditch and then it goes all the way up to near the elevator in Bode. Um, initially I had planned kind of on crossing that road. Um, and I talked with Ben and it looked like, typically when you cross a county road, this is in the city limits of Bode, but outside city limits, if you cross a county secondary road, the secondary road pays for that tile crossing, uh, for a drainage system. This is in the city limits of Bode, and there's a twenty-eighty agreement that Bode is, takes care of the maintenance of that county blacktop within city limits. Um, and attorney advised us that that kind of transfers that responsibility over to the city of Bode. So if we board under the blacktop, the city of Bode would be responsible for that. Um, and there is, there's surface related to get, to get water across the road, there's a culvert there. Um, and Eric and I met out there and kind of looked at what I was planning and.
I think there's some, as we looked at that, I think some viable options to make that work.
Yeah.
And, and without going across underneath the road, like Colin said, because it is in the city limits. But you might want to come up with the best thought process as we have looked at it.
Yeah, because one thing that the water's gonna have to do now is kind of go in this U shape almost because it's gotta go down the south side of the, go south on the west side of the road, go through a culvert, and then come back north where we would shape the road ditch and then put a big intake in to bring the water in. Um, we could put that intake right where the culvert crosses the road. Um, but there would be some additional cost in getting the pipes over there, probably an additional twelve to thirteen thousand to bring that pipe over.
And it's probably thirty thousand to board under the road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So are we talking on the east side, the west side of the old, our old shop?
So, yeah, uh, on the west side of our old shop would be on the east side of the road. We're talking about born on the east of the road.
Right, right where that tile.
Both sides are owned by the elevator now.
Okay. Which, the elevator said they didn't want any.
Right, yeah, I spoke with that elevator and they expressed to me that they, like, they haven't had any problem with, they said it goes into the ditch and sits there and then eventually, like, it sits there a long time, but eventually goes away and hasn't flooded them. So they weren't interested in, um, paying additional cost to get that under the road. Which, even if, even if secondary roads is gonna pay it, Ben and I talked about that, it's kind of, it's a steep cost for what you're gaining. I mean, it, it, it is the best way to do that, is get the water under, in, under the road into that pipe as soon as you can. But is it worth that additional thirty, thirty thousand dollars to do that? I really don't think so.
And if the surrounding landowners don't really care, I can't see why you'd want to spend that money.
Right.
To wait another day or two for the pond to go down, you know?
Well, if the water gets to the road surface, under the road, through the culvert, and then get in, get into the pipe.
Yeah.
And they've got an intake into west ditch, that needs to be lowered about eight inches. That'll help their drainage.
And it will be going into a new tile system.
Yeah, so, so.
But I think that, one, because it, like, it is an absolute U shape. It goes here, goes there, goes there, and it's all on surface. So on the east side, potential of getting the intake to where the, under the road culvert is, might be worth the additional expense. Because, you know, I mean, what do we do all the time? We clean out drainage ditches. Well, the secondary roads do all the time, clean out road ditches. So if you have it manufactured as the intake is here and it doesn't rely on surface drainage quite so much, it probably would be alleviate down the road maintenance. Get it in the intake quicker instead of relying on it, you know? Then you add in a ten thousand dollar increase, not a thirty plus thousand dollar increase to the project.
Well, and one alternative is I, I tried to avoid cutting straight across the elevator's lot there. I don't know.
It's just crushed rock, you're right.
Yeah. If they were ever gonna want to build something on there, they couldn't do that if we put the tile in there. So, um, I could check with them before we went to like a, to put it out to bid to see where they, they'd be at with that. Like, if they're not planning to use that for anything, we could just go straight through. Because the, the extra ten to fifteen thousand was staying out of their lot and then teeing off kind of right to the road ditch.
So Colin, if we run, if we run that the way you have the proposal there in that existing main, is that gonna be done away with, or you?
I'm glad you brought that up because it, it is poor shake. And the best thing to do, if it was easy, would be to just get rid of that whole thing and go right over top of it, put this dig, dig that out, put the new one in. But it's easier said than done if you're trying to put tile in and you're going from downhill to uphill and then you've got this thing dumping water on you the whole time. Um, we could.
We ran into an issue trying to do that before, and you get a wet season, you just can't work.
This does not work.
There's times where you can get away with it, when the tiles aren't running.
Yeah.
And it, it's real nice when you want to do that, um, but it's not very often. And the other option is to, to cross-connect it, so basically run at different intervals, run, connect the old tile into the new tile, and whatever comes through there, um, can get, at least get to the new tile, but it's still having to use that old crummy tile is the issue. So I don't, if there's any landowner input on that.
I wonder if you've had any conversation with landowners, if you have any knowledge of, let's say, or connections into the existing tile. You know, that could be just obviously hooked directly to the new system.
Right, well, and right now, for a good stretch of that, I've got the new tile being on the south side.
Yeah.
Between the old tile and the tracks.
Right.
And if we're, it's more likely to be stuck from the north.
Yeah.
If we wanted to catch that with the new tile, we might flip it to the other side. Although we do.
Well, it depends if you're gonna crush it.
Yeah.
It's one thing, but if you're gonna cross it and then try to reconnect it, then you're gonna be going through it twice. Uh, could be several times, right?
Right.
I mean, if it's doable, and it probably is, it'd make more sense to run it on the north side of the old tile, hook up any existing laterals that go into that old tile and abandon that old tile. Because there's other districts around the county where they've left portions of the old system and they put in a new system. And that's what is still being fixed to this day. and they put in a new system and that's what is still being fixed to this day. It just, it, it's greatly relieved because of the new system, but there's still, it's still workable and it really should have probably been just abandoned when it was, you know, when the new system was built.
Well, and the reason why I went on the south side is because there's a couple laterals, like the main tile actually crosses the tracks and goes into Bode, so I was crossing those to catch them.
Right.
Um...
So then my other question would be down there towards the lagoon where it crosses the railroad again, would we cap that there, or would we let that run so that it, if there was any overflow, it would still have an access to move?
I would cap that.
Yeah, I would too.
Um...
And then it just, when it's on the south side of the tracks, it would just continue?
Yeah.
That would be its own main or its own...
Yep, so the, uh, classification would be set up. It'd be basically two different tile systems.
Right.
And the north, actually, in the pre-classification report, I have maps that show that... Now, in the back of that, the second pack of information, there's a map. And you can see there's areas that it's like, it's the north side of the track and some of Bode and then on the last, very last page is the south part. So that's kind of gives you an idea of how it would be split up. And I do understand that the, um, the lagoons hook into that, hook into the tile and they, they would continue to cross the tracks and go south on that old line.
If that ever did go bad, it'd have to hook into the, the north side then.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Or fix, fix the south. I know there has been like at least a thousand feet of this on the south side of the track that was repaired several years ago.
Yeah.
So, all that, what's, what would be a timeframe if you were looking to put this thing together?
Well, I would hope to get it done, either, or have it be done either this fall or next spring, early next spring before planning, but I know that there's seed corns.
I was gonna say...
Out there and so if we, if and when we put it out to bid, that would be part of the instruction.
Start date would probably be after seed corn's out.
Yeah, and we'll just say in there, uh, in the bid information that construction won't be able to begin until after the seed corn's out here. And we can give them an approximate timeframe when that is, but they'll know that it'll be a fall, fall construction.
So you're talking next fall?
No.
This fall?
This fall.
Okay, good.
Yep.
It's not a huge... It's certainly a huge project.
No, it shouldn't take that long to get it done, really.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, to Bruce's question, what does it take to get to the process of maybe it can be this fall? What do we need to do, so you've got your preliminary engineering report? I guess my question is, and it's been brought up, uh, you designed it with the fifteen and eighteen inch tile is what the numbers reflect.
Yep.
Uh, we brought up the possibility of having it bid with plastic and then we also brought up the possibility of upsizing to twenty-four and eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
So where does, that's not in this report, what, where do we go with that?
Uh, basically, the, the clearest way to do that is if, assuming this is all approved, you would, you would approve the engineering report and direct, direct the engineer to proceed with, uh, towards bid letting or develop plans and specifications. Um, and then also just say with...
With that.
You're gonna alter different...
Alternatives, including...
So, so there'd be three, three options, is what you're saying?
And then we could determine which is the best and most economical.
And, and I'll correct me if I'm wrong, but over the years of improvement projects, you know, we do like to get the landowner input on that. Uh, and typically, I mean, A, we know this current system is over a hundred years old, so just fit your mind around a hundred year minimum, uh, you know, with this project. So the, I'm just gonna use the upside as an example. You wouldn't want to put it just, and that's great for today, but like Colin mentioned, if Bode improves their drainage, which already dumps into it, if some other tile is hooked into it, which it probably will be, you know, it's a hundred year project, long after many of us will be here, so. But I could put that out there, so if you can do that, I would say that would be the direction to go.
I think that's the best way to do it.
Get the, get the options out there on the table and then you can do that when you're putting the plans together to put out to, to bid this, right?
I know we've heard from people that have had water issues in the part of Bode that, when we have a lot of water, that it's a mess, so I guess that's, we're hoping that it's gonna take some of that out.
Well, with all that, we would probably need a motion to accept this preliminary engineering report.
I'm guessing that's where you, unless you want to put any input from...
Is there any questions or...
If I might, uh, I don't want to cause any trouble for anybody, but I...
We're used to it. We're used, we're used to it, so go ahead.
And I'm used to giving them. Uh, from my stand, my wife's standpoint, Melanie Wagner's, wants to say that. Uh, I think I was probably one of the first people to come to these office and say, "Wish we could do something because we're patching and we're patching and we're patching." And I think we really got scared to death about a year ago when we combined corn one night and when we came back the second time, uh, come, came back from the other end, we realized that we had just fraddled a hole about the size of that desk and we thought, "Oh, my God, where'd that combine?" And just realized something should be done. Everything that we're talking about is south of the railroad track. And, uh, I, I don't see any improvement here in all of this, all this money spent for our sake, except for the fact that you said you may cap the old tile, is that right? So if you capped the old tile up by the lagoon, that would take water pressure off of the road.
Considerable.
For, for me to explain that to Melanie or whatever, that's what it is.
Yeah.
We wouldn't get new, excuse me, we wouldn't get new tile in our neck of the woods, but we would hope that we would relieve a bunch of water pressure.
Pressure.
Correct.
And then, and then it comes down to, and what does that cost us? What does it cost us to relieve pressure instead of fixing it? Because I have no doubt in my mind, I mean, we, I've been out there long enough to know.
We just...
We're gonna have more, we're gonna have more patching. It is bad, I mean, like, the timers, every time they look in there, they say, "We fixed an area and we take the flashlight, we look down the old pipe and, like, like it's like football and you don't know about that."
Yeah, it's oval shaped.
And so we're, we're gonna have more problems, but maybe we won't have much trouble. And that's what I'm gonna have to do.
Well, and one, one advantage doing this too is that that pipe down there, it's larger, obviously, because it's carrying all this water from up, up above.
Yeah.
And it cut off most of town of Bode, all that water and everything else north of the track.
Yep.
Um, it'll take that much water off of it, um, and then it really makes that, that size of tile, assuming it was in good condition, adequate for drainage. But, but then you could, instead of doing improvement, you could then do a repair, which you don't always, if, if, depending on the cost, you don't have to go through as much regular roll with engineering and, um, and things like that to do a repair. And I know, like I said, some of it has been repaired, but like you said, I suspect that that the rest of it probably is in poor condition.
It will. Yeah, and it, even, even on the north side of the track, there was, there was many, many times. But I think just, like, like you say, if you cut the pressure down, it'll work, it'll be good. And stay away from the pressing of the rail.
Yeah.
Well, that's the biggest fear, because every time we've had issues with the railroad, it's a nightmare.
For us.
To either cross it or be anywhere near.
The block of this twenty-five grand we've got listed in the estimate for their cost.
Well...
Part of it.
I don't think they will, because it's...
No.
They, they haven't had problems before on deals like this. The only time we have problems is when we have a hole in the railroad tracks and they say it's not our fault.
Right.
You know, they, they, they realize that when you do a project, they own land within the district and they have to pay their fair share. I, I don't think we'll have a problem. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I hope you like it.
To your point, I, I guess what, how I view this is, is this, like you said, this, this does cost quite a bit of money and you're wondering, okay, what's the benefit to, to you guys? Well, it is taking that water pressure off, but I think it's a good first step and it'd be, let's see if that helps string it out a little bit longer, but then you do have options, different options that this gives you to do repairs and things south of the tracks. You wouldn't need, you wouldn't need as big of a tile anymore because it's not a fully combined system. It's not taking all the water anymore, it's separated it out.
Well, it's been several years, hasn't it, since we did something out in that south side? I mean, it was a couple of Band-Aid fixes that...
Yeah, like, they laid a thousand feet of deal in the...
That's been a while back and then there's been a couple of repairs, as Donny said. It, it is a concern, I know exactly what you're saying.
I think, and there have been some on the north side of the track.
Yeah, and there have been some on the north. But I think Colin summed it all up, I mean, it does, it, not exactly, but somewhat splits it into two systems to a degree. And, yes, it does open up options for more repair than improvement, you know? Uh, much as we love all the engineering companies, you know, it does cut out engineering companies when it's a repair versus an improvement, so you save that, and you mentioned it.
Yep.
So it, it, it is, and, and, you know, absolute worst case scenario, uh, there's continued issues on the north and over the south, it, with this system cutting off about, you know, more than half of it. Things, it can be addressed, you know, it, it could be...
And the, and the tile is pretty shallow on that south side of the tracks, isn't it?
Um, that's, from what I've seen, where the times I've seen it repaired, it's not particularly shallow.
Oh, it isn't?
Not on the south side.
Okay.
No, and like Colin said, it's, uh, by far and away the larger, you'd never design it that large if you were just taking the south system as is and putting a system in because it's designed to carry, it's, it's less, you know, it's taking away over half of the water that's going into it right now, maybe two-thirds.
So is that eighteen, Donny on the south side, is that eighteen inch?
Where did that end at?
Uh, well, we replaced it with eighteen inch steel walls, so...
I would...
There's some eighteen and twenty, I think, and it gets to a twenty at the very end, but I thi, I think it's eighteen in that.
Well, that's what I, we looked and I thought that's what it said, but I didn't... So when you said it's getting, is it half, is it over half filled? When you said oval, it's starting to fill up?
It isn't oval, it's fills up, it's broken down.
It's crushed, right?
It's crushed. Why didn't know if it had half dirt?
No, it's, it's white, it's clean.
Oh, it's clean, fine.
That's the benefit with the south system, you know, you cut off the proposed, uh, improvement system, that's got all sorts of malfunctions in and around Bode and, and between there and the lagoons and possibly going the other way, but, uh, the south system, when new repairs have been made, the tile's been working fine, it just said it's had to be repaired.
Well, uh, please, uh, I should know this, but I don't. Uh, when you talk about repairs, is that repairs like what we've been doing?
Yes.
And it's been very, very fortunate from that standpoint, if we haven't lost a combine or tractor or something, so we got a hole out there, we gotta farm around it a little bit, but someone has always paid to build it and we've been very happy that they have. Are these repairs gonna fall on us or...
No, no, it's still a, it's still a big tile.
But technically, it still falls on you because it goes to land all this time.
Well, that would be to fix them and not have to have an engineer.
It's, it's a quicker fix too, you know, you come in, I got a problem, we can get at it as soon as we can get somebody out there rather than go through a hearing and a process and...
It's just a word, it's just a word order.
When you have all the repairs you do from either side and you're still dealing with that, that railroad, how do we know what's under the railroad? Is it all busted up there and what, how, how do we know that? If we fix everything on both sides and maybe a bunch of the problem is under the railroad, what do you mean by that?
That's when you run into issues, but at this point, uh, certainly at least the area that would affect you in, in Melanie's ground, that, that, uh, I'm sure is in fine condition. But that work crosses and it heads, you know, to the north.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
And one more, really for all practical intents and purposes, the way this new system's designed, it doesn't make any difference if the one by the lagoons, it, well, it does to the lagoons if that fails. Then like it stated, it'd have to go into the new, new tile. But, uh, I don't think there's an issue there, it's more of an issue that, like Colin said, that system is just overloaded and overloaded.
And if there was a problem under the tracks, probably the first thing you'd wanna do is dig it up outside the track and then run a camera up and see what it looks like, um, and then go from there.
And I'm, I'm not proposing that there is a problem there, I just wonder if all of a sudden you got the mill fixed up and then the problem was under there, does it create a whole new monster for you guys or what? I suppose it would.
Yeah, it does. When you have, when you have to go under the road tracks, it can be a problem. But like you say, typically, you know, like, putting a new line under the tracks isn't a real big problem. When you're into problems is like, if there's a hole in the tracks and you say, "You guys caused the problem."
No.
They'll never take the blame for causing the problem. They just, they just fight it tooth and nail. You know, if they dumped a train car into your track, into your hole of your tile, it, it won't be their fault.
Well, Kevin Walker used, used to make the statement, "They're a country within the country."
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
And I think that's about it, true.
Mm-hmm, so, as we stated, if you can go back and figure what we just talked about, the upsize tile, the plastic tile, and then you'd come back and present that, we'd have those numbers down there.
Yeah, so we basically, it'd be, you would, you would direct me to get the plans and specifications and I'd come back here with those, um, for your approval to then put them out to bid.
Okay, well...
So there's one more check before putting, putting it out to bid, obviously.
Well, to keep this moving forward, and I think this is all great information and great discussion, if need be, I'd make the motion, A, to accept this preliminary, preliminary engineering report and then with the direction of what we had talked about, uh, get those other two options in your next report back to us. One motion.
All right.
We have a motion in a second to accept the preliminary engineering report on one oh three, the improvements, and with the specifications of plastic and upgrading to a twenty-four. Is there any other discussion?
One question, approximate timeframe to get it back here.
It shouldn't take real long, most of the design is done...
This afternoon?
Not... Because you gotta put the specifications together, all the contract, weight, quantity and things. Um, for sure, within a month, I'm hoping within a couple of weeks.
Because I'm thinking too, to give the ability, if not flexibility, of a potential, get the bid letting and the option of this fall.
Yeah.
The sooner, sooner you get it out there, the better.
Well, the sooner we get the opportunity to bid it, the sooner they can lock the pipe in and it...
Yeah, so the quicker we get it done, the better.
Yeah, yeah, yep, we'll, we'll go right on.
Push towards the two weeks instead of the month.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got.
All right.
Can I ask one more dumb question?
No dumb questions.
I don't know much about this, but I'm asking. But where does that leave us or people like us as far as, as doing tiling in this land? Doing some more tiling in this land? Are we allowed to tile into the main?
You live in that district, absolutely.
We would be, if at our own cost, if we go to the north side of the track.
Absolutely.
Say we like to put in a couple of lines, help us out, we are allowed to do that.
Absolutely, yep, as long as you are within your district. Absolutely, yep. As long as you are within your district, yes.
That's how great the districts are kind of, were set up from the beginning. Everybody owns land within the district has full right to use of those district facilities. You're all helping pay for the construction and maintenance of them. Um, so you're all, you're all paying for that system based on your relative benefits. So there are some differences in proportions and how much you pay what. Um, but, yeah, everybody has full right to use the tile.
The only time you wouldn't is if you're outside the boundary and you wanted to bring water in to that other district, right?
Right.
Then we'd say, you can't do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, just make sure we have in the writing where we mark every tile connections in our contracts.
Yep. We've got that in standard language in the...
Of course, this is the small ones, so we ain't quite so concerned about getting everything to us partway through the project.
It's built.
Yeah, it's built, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All the connections are photographed and GPS marked.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for all of that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So we'll look forward to, towards the end of the month.
We have another copy for her brother, if you have one.
Yep.
I guess they'll also have some copies in here at the...
That's from DD eleven.
At the, uh, auditor's...
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the district, I don't know if Rich, did he get a copy? Um, wasn't he the one that signed the petition?
Yeah.
I saw. Rich Olson. All right, got anything else that you wanna talk about?
Yeah, DD eleven, that lateral ditch. A classification of that, so that's a, it's a ditch off of DD eleven.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Donny.
And we talked about this before. There's, uh, there's gonna be a clean out that's done there. Work order clean out and some tree clearing, that same area. So this, it's a lateral ditch to DD eleven's main open ditch. And right now, any work that's done on that would be assessed over the entirety of DD eleven, even though most of those lands don't use this lateral ditch.
Yeah.
Um, so it's really just a matter of breaking off this into its own schedule. Kind of in the middle, there's a map. You can see the, you can see the watershed. But there is a tile system that goes, it's sub-two, well, it's a sub-district, I guess. Sub-two of DD eleven is what's dumped into the upper end of this lateral A ditch.
And your preliminary reclassification takes that into account, then?
Yeah.
Or goes to the northwest area there.
That's, and I've got a dollars map in there that kinda shows if you had a fifty thousand dollar project, what would people be paying? And bas, today, basically, it's, um, basically, just receiving the report and then setting a date for the, for the hearing.
So most likely, this would be, and so this would be basically considered DD eleven lateral A.
Yeah. It'd be a new schedule.
This area right here, okay.
What are you thinking on timeframe for when you wanna set something, the hearing date, how, what time?
I suppose it'd have to be late July, because it's gotta be twenty days, at least twenty days after you send in the notice and, uh...
Forty?
Yeah, I think you're right.
We got the four, which we won't be here, the eleventh, the eighteenth, and the twenty-fifth would cover July.
Twenty days from now.
That's, uh, soonest.
Yeah, that'd be third, yeah, so it'd be sometime in July.
The eighteenth would be about as quick as you can.
Is that, is that too quick?
Is that gonna be a new time to put it together?
Oh, it's basically done.
Pretty much.
It's done.
It's done, it just needs to be published.
Well, with that, we need to make these in two separate motions because I would make the motion to accept the tentative reclassification report for DD eleven lateral A.
I'll, I'll second that.
So you wanna run that, we'll vote that quick?
Yep.
Or you wanna do them together?
Let's do them separate.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept DD eleven lateral A. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And then with that, I would make a motion to set the reclassification hearing for said district for, uh, Monday, July eighteenth at nine AM.
That gives you time to get down here, Colin?
Yep.
Nine will work?
Yep.
Anybody wanna second that?
I'm sorry, second? I was writing.
So we have, uh, nine AM on the eighteenth. Uh, motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, nine AM it is.
Excellent. So we might expect to see you prior to that with your information on the DD one oh three that we just talked about.
Yep.
Okay. I think we're in good shape with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're getting a little nervous there. We were, Trish was on the phone trying to see if nobody called and we were gonna juggle it around, but we figured if we started our, um, going over the election the other day, then you'd walk in and then give us the list.
Walk back out. We wanna do it, so...
Anyway, we appreciate you working down.
Anything else in drainage? With, uh, we just had a late submission of, uh, would it be an estimate, which we did like a week or two ago as well, uh, on some finishing up projects that are gonna be levied in September. They'll be in the middle of September. Trish, is everything good with that now? So that that's getting put together and the whole process of getting those levies out?
That'll be added to the list?
Yeah, that was the two that we talked about. And the one a little later than we'd have liked submission, but it's, hey, this is my estimate on the balance of the repairs. We got two of those, and then we got that one today. That's still work, the last two. So we wanted to get as much and as complete, uh, the amounts levied which would be coming to the folks in September as possible, get that cleaned up. So that's about all I have.
By the time you come back on the eighteenth, Terry will have this all down and we'll be...
Well, in a few weeks, if you got any questions or anything, feel free to give, to give me a call or a request or be glad to...
Seriously, call him because he's, Colin is not only good at his job, but he's actually good at explaining things in layperson's terms. He doesn't get as hung up on his engineering degree as... I try to speak in engineerese, but, uh, he can, he can...
Come on, Ben.
No, Ben, Ben's pretty good too. Ben's pretty good too. Ben's pretty good too.
Come here.
We're gonna lay our, we're gonna do your... I think I told him that. He's, Ben's pretty good too. Uh, he's good at explaining stuff in layman's terms as well.
I was, uh, marking it out there for, guys working, they got a lot of work out, do you think?
Uh, contractors?
Yeah.
There's, it picked up some, but it hasn't, hasn't really taken off.
I haven't seen a lot of major projects going on, and that's why I was wondering. Some guys might be pretty hungry.
I think it might be pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think there'll be a good amount of interest.
And it'll get it done this fall, hopefully.
We just did a, I just did a, it was, it's a smaller project, so it was small enough that I could just do competitive quotes and not a whole bid process. Um, but there was a good amount of interest in that. Um, just did that a couple of weeks ago. It was similar size, I think it's eighteen, eighteen-inch bite.
A lot of guys can do that size if you don't have to go real deep.
Yep, and this is a project that smaller contractors can handle. It's a long life, it's not a huge run of it. They got good weather in the fall, should be pretty attainable to get it...
So you said that one area where it was thirteen, is that the deepest?
Yeah.
So is that a long stretch or is it...
It's not super long. It's basically, um, northeast of the lagoons. You gotta cut through a bit of a hill. Like, the natural way was to go across the track the way they called it originally, so we had to cut through a bit of a hill, um, to stay north of the track.
All right.
But it's a few hundred feet at least.
No, they except for the half of each position.
Oh, boy, well, that's a... Yeah.
All right, well, with that, Dave, your...
Motion to go out, drainage.
Motion to go out?
Second.
In a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are out at nine fifty-two. You wanna reconvene then at Board of Canvas? Or you want them to take a minute?
I'd like to take two minutes.
Take a little break and then we'll get at our canvas, which shouldn't be too bad.
All right.
But I made it easy this time.
You made it easy for us?
Yeah.
Good. I see it looks a little different.
Yeah.
They have a, I got the report from election night off the computer, which takes into consideration all the little tallies.
Did our audit go good?
Audit.
Well, everybody, every county had one audit on one primary or one precinct, so it went good?
Well, yes.
It was good.
Personally, it was okay. I mean, it's not, you know, but, you know. So I will read off to you guys what I have from election night. And this is the certification and what is submitted to the state is what you guys have.
Okay.
And then I'll have to have you sign a bunch of stuff.
No, what, she said the precinct for people pissed that they had to show a license or...
We did run out of ballots, paper ballots, so then we had to use the OBI, which is the handicap accessible for seeing and hearing impaired. It has the...
So how many did you have if you ran out? I mean, how many did we have in the... Did you have a hundred? Did you have five hundred that we would've run out?
Oh, only a few, not that many. But we had one thousand and twenty-three voters, ballots.
Out of ten thousand, is that what we had in the county?
That's a fine looking shirt. Did you take up golf?
Yeah, it was kind of a...
No. When you wear three and four X shirts when you see one, you should buy it.
You buy it.
I'm not a Nike guy, but...
Well, I just, in case you're voting, you're a golfer, type of, well, I didn't know.
I'm not sponsored by Nike.
Dang it.
I wish I was. Seventeen, is that what you said, seventeen percent?
I don't know, what was it, Trish? Thirteen?
Thirteen?
Thirteen percent?
Oh.
Although there was a new beautifully contested races, so...
How would it go, we'll get the, I wonder how Thompson's and the other, is that in Taconan in Humble County?
What was your, uh, fishing trip or trip in general, you said in the song?
I saw the pictures. Looks like you had a good time.
Oh, I did.
It wasn't real hard fishing.
Actually, I think I caught one, Trish, because most of them are by my own kids.
Ryan Leakers?
Oh, well, by leech, like...
For a quail?
Not in leech, so...
Well, he just called me this week to do...
Three other lakes we did.
We rented a house.
You're welcome, too.
A funny place.
Thinking of...
We get to our place, we rented and pull up and a bear, mama bear, and two cubs come out of the garage.
Yeah, okay.
Nice. The garage door is partway up.
Well, at least he's...
But we went through everything pretty...
Big there.
Literally, to try to...
Hanging out.
Find some bait.
I think the deal is, the people say when you leave, put your garbage bags in the garage. So imagine they figured there's always something that's eating the garage, huh? But you would've thought the, the door would've worked.
Okay, well, let's get started.
You didn't see it after that?
No, I was hoping they would, but they never came back.
Now, on Board of Canvas...
Probably three hundred and fifty pound bear.
And two little bears.
Two little cubs, they're so...
Nine fifteen seven?
Do we need a motion to organize the Board of Canvas?
Well, let's make one just to...
I'll make that motion go into the Board of Canvas.
Oh, yeah.
I'll second Trish.
Motion in a second to reconvene with the Board of Canvas. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. I got nine fifty-seven.
So election night, we had one thousand and twenty ballots counted. There were three subdivisions that were confirmed the following day, so that leaves a total of one thousand and twenty-three. There were seven hundred and seventy-two Republicans and two hundred and fifty-one Democratic ballots counted. So with us, we'll start with the Republican Party of U.S. Senators.
Which page is that for us?
Your second.
Aye.
And then we'll just go by Jim Carlin, so two hundred and six votes. Chuck Grassley had five hundred and sixty-two with one write-in.
Can we ask who that name was? I just wondered if they put something fun...
Um...
Donald Duck or somebody like that. I just was mad at the...
Seems like every time there's one. Usually, I don't remember, I'm forgetting what it was.
Not that important.
Okay, the following race is for Senate Representative District Four. Randy Beemstruck, seven hundred votes, write-in eight. Tim Reynolds for Governor, seven hundred and thirty-six votes, five write-ins.
Can I ask a question before we get any further? What is considered an undervote?
If someone chooses not to vote at all, they skip that race.
It's empty.
Oh, so that's just a like, left like?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
They voted in the other part of the ticket, but they didn't put the...
They voted after and all the dots.
Okay, just, just one clarification, thank you.
Not to vote on everything, so... So for Secretary of State, is that where we were?
Yep.
Okay, Paul Pate had six hundred and eighty-nine, write-in of one, no overvotes. And Auditor of State, Todd Halber, had three hundred and fifty. Susan, no, Mary Ann, whatever her name is, had three hundred and five.
Husa.
Husa? I think it's how you say it, is Husa. Husa, okay.
I heard her one time.
And a write-in of one. And this is a hundred and sixteen undervotes.
Oh.
A lot of people didn't care about that race.
Yeah.
That's an important one.
Well, it's important, but...
But the names aren't familiar.
Something that jumped out at me.
You didn't see a lot of that on the TV or here on the radio or...
That is true.
Not too much of that one.
So Treasurer of State, Robbie Smith, has six hundred and fifty-five, write-ins of two, no overvotes and undervotes of a hundred and fifteen. undervotes of 115. Secretary of Ag, Mike Yeats, at 693, two write-ins, no overvotes, and 77 undervotes. Attorney General, Brianna Bird, had 654, two write-ins, no overs, and 116 undervotes. State Representative, District 56, James L. Nelson, 170. Mark Thompson, 548, one write-in, no over, and 53 under. Board of Supervisors, District 1, Bruce Reimers, 161, three write-ins, no overs, and 10 undervotes.
There's your Mickey Mouse and Donald Duck.
Um, Supervisor, District 2, Sandy Aloney, 173, one write-in, no over, and 21 undervotes. Board of Supervisors, District 3, Rick Peterson, 112, two write-ins, no overvotes, and 21 under.
Well, it looks like Bruce is more popular. He only had 10 undervotes.
Yeah.
Ten. I'd never vote for him or whatever he put.
Don't know the man.
Okay. For County Treasurer, Jana Pettinger, had 674, one write-in, zero overvotes, 97 undervotes. County Recorder, Diane Amerson, 703 votes, no write-ins, no overvotes, and 69 undervotes. County Attorney, John Beatty, had 641 votes, six write-ins, one overvote, and 124 undervotes.
How would you have an overvote?
What's that?
How would you have an overvote? I've never seen an overvote. I vote for too many.
They vote for both people or something.
Yeah. But he didn't have anybody running.
You know.
He must have did a write-in.
They must have put a write-in on it and...
Oh, okay. Cause I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah. How do you overvote?
Yeah.
Vote twice.
Yeah.
Vote twice. Didn't want to... U.S. Senator for the Democratic Party, Abby Finkenhour, 84. Michael Franken, 153. Glenn Hurst, 12. One write-in, zero overvotes, and one undervote.
Why haven't they been beating her up on the talk radio?
Yeah.
Boy, are they?
Well, she's, she had the petitions...
Oh, yeah. To get on the ballot.
On the ballot because she didn't have enough...
Oh, signatures.
Yeah.
For signatures, so...
I'm glad she didn't get in for that reason.
U.S. State Representative, District 4, Democratic Party, is 220 for Brian Milton, one write-in, zero overvotes, 30 undervotes. Governor for Democratic Party, Deidre DeCheer, is it Cheer?
DeCheer.
DeCheer, um, 231 votes, two write-ins, zero over, and 18 under. Secretary of State for the Democratic Party, Joel Miller, 167. Eric Van Lachern, 50, no write-ins, no overs, and 34 undervotes. Auditor of the State, Democratic Party, Rob Sand, 233, one write-in, zero overvotes, and 17 undervotes.
Everybody thought he was going to run for Governor.
Treasurer of State, Democratic Party, Michael Fitzgerald, is 239, zero write-ins, zero overvotes, and 12 undervotes. Secretary of Agriculture for Democratic Party, John Norwood, 226, write-in zero, over zero, 25 under. Attorney General for Democratic Party, Tom Mueller, 237, write-in zero, over, zero, undervotes, 14.
I thought he was retiring.
Apparently not.
No, I, I think there was talk of it but he never did.
Okay. So for the State Representative, District 56, Democratic Party, it's six write-in votes, no overs, 245 undervotes. County Board of Supervisors, District 1, Democratic Party, two write-ins, zero over, and 63 under. District 2, Democratic Party, for Supervisor, is zero for write-ins, zero for overvotes, and 49 under. County Supervisor, District 3, Democratic Party, two write-ins, zero overvotes, and 54 undervotes.
Same two that wrote in online, right?
County Treasurer, Democratic Party, six write-in votes, zero overvotes, 245 undervotes. And County Recorder, Democratic Party, five write-ins, zero overvotes, 246 undervotes. And final, Democratic Party Attorney, five write-ins, zero overvotes, and 246 undervotes.
If I go on record and say that I can't miss the tape such a much...
Exactly the same thing.
This is so much easier than...
Wow. And this is printed off the night of the election?
This is like going...
The thing is, you can't see the...
The target?
Cause didn't the tapes have the write-ins?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, they had the write-in and one...
You had to read them.
That's okay. I...
I mean, she would mark them.
I like to record by saying and being with respect. This is much nicer.
It's a lot nicer.
This is by far and away...
They are.
Then we had to pull the tape up because it has to win for record.
Walk back. We have to sign something?
I have...
Typically, we have to sign something.
There, is that one the same?
Oh, everybody does.
The same you do.
It looks like there's a place in the front of my sign. Brianna Bird, who won Republican.
So is this Brad, I mean, just started doing that?
You have the official results that you can...
I'm glad to see that Abby Finkenhour did do well because that was...
Do I have the official?
Right, baby.
They would be...
Well, I know, but don't we declare winner, right? All winners?
Chicken dinner, what's that?
Do they have to stay in the same order?
I'll just pass them in.
All right.
Well, we have to declare...
Winner for U.S. State Senator, Republican, was Chuck Grassley, with 562 votes.
And they're beating him up too because he's 88 and...
He's 88?
At least.
He was in the 80s.
At least.
It's my mother's age.
Still runs.
He's sharp though.
Well...
He's not the oldest one running. Who gets the...
Yeah.
No.
Representative, District 4, Randy Feenstra, is the declared winner with 700 votes. Governor for Republican...
We'll get here and then I'll stack them up.
Tim Reynolds is declared winner for 736 votes. Secretary of State, Republican, Paul Pape, is the declared winner for six, with 689 votes. Uh, Auditor of State, Republican, is Todd Halber with 350 votes. Treasurer of State, Republican, Robbie Smith, with 655 votes. Michael Nag for Secretary of State, Republican, with 600...
Ag. Secretary of Ag.
Ag. What did I say?
State.
Oh, Secretary of Ag. Wait, Nag, is 683 votes. Brianna Bird for Attorney General, Republican, 654 votes. State Representative, District 56, Mark Thompson, with 548 votes. County Board of Supervisors, District 1, Bruce Reimers, with 161 votes. County Board of Supervisors, District 2, Republican, Sandy Aloney, with 173 votes. County Board of Supervisors, District 3, Republican, Rick Peterson, with 112 votes.
Oh, my God.
County Treasurer, Republican, Jana Pettinger, 674 votes.
Got a pick on you.
County Recorder, Republican, Diane Amerson, with 703 votes. And County Attorney, Republican, John Beatty, with 641 votes. And U.S. State Senator, Democratic, is Michael Franken, with 153 votes. U.S. State, U.S. Representative, District 4, Democratic, is Brian Milton, with 220 votes. Governor, Democratic, is Deidre DeCheer, with 231 votes.
Does she have a lot of people down at Rustic from C T?
Secretary of State, Democratic, is Joel Miller, with 167 votes.
I just went by the pictures. Pictures look fairly...
Auditor of State, Democratic, Rob Sand, with 233 votes. Treasurer of State, Democratic, uh, Michael Fitzgerald, with 239 votes. Secretary of Ag, Democratic, John Norwood, with 226 votes. Attorney General, Tom Mueller, with 237 votes. State Representative, District 56, is a scattering of six. County Board of Supervisors, District 1, Democratic, is a scattering of two. County Board of Supervisors, District 2, Democratic, is zero. County Board of Supervisors, District 3, Democratic, is a scattering of two. County Treasurer, Democratic, a scattering of six.
Happy birthday, that pile of thyme.
Yeah. County Recorder, Democratic, a scattering of five votes. And County Attorney, Democratic, is a scattering of five votes.
Did you get all those down or you wanted to reread them?
Yeah, I'm sure I recorded them, but if you could...
Yeah, I can do that.
Can you have this count? You want the copy?
Um, sure.
I mean, it's fairly self-explanatory. It tells up above.
What is it?
Um...
Okay.
And then it gives you the numbers.
It's write-ins and then...
You're more than welcome because it's going to go over in that recycling bin otherwise.
Okay.
More than a couple of each. Okay. Cause people like...
Is there a certain quantity you have to have in order to get on the general election? That's what I didn't know.
Yeah.
I know I've heard of it, I can't remember what, what it was now. We've never had, we've never...
Was that all we have to sign?
You and somebody in Webster County one time had enough.
We did.
The motion that we adjourned.
Well, recesses of Board of canvassers, not of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to recesses the Board of Canvas and we have go back as Board of Supervisors. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We are back as the Board of Supervisors.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn.
10:16.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign.